Do it officially.
Very good. Have we all had the chance to go through the minutes of our last meeting?
Yes, we have.
Yep, I know what they said.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the last meeting.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, the new hearing.
Mr. Ferrera. Mr. Ferrera asked for a continuance.
Joseph Ferrera, Family Realty Trust. Has asked for a continuance.
To January the, I forget the eleventh.
Eleventh, Charlie, yeah. January eleventh.
And the year is?
Two thousand seventeen.
Wow.
Yes, sir.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Why, yeah.
Our first new hearing is an abbreviated notice of intent submitted by Lamont.
Did we vote to approve the continuance?
What?
Should we vote to approve the continuance?
We did.
We did. I thought we voted on the minutes, I didn't really vote for that.
I make a motion that we continue.
All in favor?
Aye.
These guys are hard to keep up with.
Yeah.
Well, you know you're next. Okay. That's it?
Yeah, please.
Okay, my name is Peter Merigan. I am the facility manager at six twenty Spring Street. Would you spell the last name, please, Peter? Yeah, M.E.R.R.I.G.A.N.
M.E.R.
R.I.G.A.N. Just like that, Merigan.
Just the way it sounds.
Just Nancy Kerrigan, except it's Peter Merigan.
Scotch or Irish?
I think.
Scotch or Irish?
Irish. He's into, generally, he's into.
Ross Common, my father. My mother's Sinclair.
I'm also from Belfast, so.
Belfast?
Yeah.
Years ago.
I visited Belfast one time. Not so many years ago. Still, still a little edgy up there.
Oh, yeah, it's tough, tough neighborhood.
That's right, that's right. Well, Jackie Lees, who would normally be here, is not able to be here tonight. So she's asked me to come in her stead. And I'll try to explain and answer as many questions as you have for the situation that we've faced over the years. These are a series of pictures that were taken of the.
Boy, that river was very dry.
I'm sorry?
The river was really dry.
It was really dry.
The driest I've ever seen.
That's the comment that we received from almost everybody that we spoke to in the town. I'm not a native, but I.
Wasn't running over the dam long.
Been a long time now, and we never saw anything like it. And anybody we spoke to had never seen anything like it.
Oh.
So, what I'm trying to do is just give you the sequence of events from the time that we saw the situation that we were facing. But, as you possibly know, the critical part of this whole thing was, with the water drying up like that, our fire system, our sprinkler system relies on the water from the river to be brought around to a cistern. And then the cistern is stored where the pump is, when the pump is needed, it's able to fire off it. We have our, we draw the water from that to feed the sprinkler system in the case we ever need. So, we were concerned about that. I'll walk you through this. That, page one, is self-explanatory, the dam. And you can see that there's no water at this stage flowing over the dam. Page two gives you a look at the slightly different angle. But on the lower right, you can see the river, the bed, perfectly dry. And it was at that time that we had an opportunity to walk around and just see what's going on down there. We've never been down there before.
Because there was water.
There was never any person, any reason to be down there before. Well, when we got down there, Paige, the next picture shows you what we, it's what we saw. The, the cistern itself, you can see where it is starting to literally fall apart on us. That water is rushing through a hole, and I'll show you the picture later on, above the slide gate that was all the way sitting on the floor of the cistern itself. Next picture shows you. This is just above that same hole that we were just looking at. And you can see where all of the concrete, all of the stone is all, and the rebar is all starting to fail on us.
Is that at the top of the dam, Peter?
I'm sorry?
Is the cistern, is that at the top of the dam?
No, this is, this is all, this is right beside our, it's right beside our pump house. Here, another picture, that might give you a little. It's a slightly different picture. It's not a slightly different picture, it's a very different picture. This is our firehouse. And it's not a firehouse, it's our pump house. Now, we have, cistern is sitting right here, on the other side of this wall, that retaining wall, okay? Again, slightly, again, here's the wall. That wall's going to be a big part of the whole situation we're going to talk about in a few minutes. And now we're looking at the cistern itself right here. Okay, here's our wall, the cistern. Now we're looking down at the cistern. This is the gate, the, I don't know the terms to describe. That is the device used to open and shut the gate. It's done manually, I'm sorry.
Yeah, probably call it a screw.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. That's right. And now we're looking down into the cistern. And again, this picture is the one that you're looking at right here. Okay, so that might give you a little perspective on the, how it was set up.
Oh, I know where it is, and I've seen it.
I'm sorry?
I say, I've been there, I've seen it, I know where it is, know where it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Know how it works.
So, what we have, picture number four is as explained. Five is a look down into the cistern itself from the top wall.
Yeah.
And well, that's the gate, that's the condition of the gate that it's in now, or was at the time of the, of our problem. So, six is the start. The actual demo, if you will, has taken place. And we're starting now to, started to put the forms in place so we can build the wall. The three walls are going to have to be built. And we're going to tie it to the fourth wall. And this is the, this is the, the wall that I was telling you about.
Yeah, I can.
Okay? And again, more pictures showing the same thing. The rebar replaced, forms, forms are being built around, rebar is being put in. Number, number eight, we're seeing the finished, the finished product. And if you look out, looking down, you see now our hole is, our hole is back in place. We're waiting for this gate to be delivered and installed. That's not it, we do not have that yet.
Made out of what?
We're expecting that, hopefully by the end of the year. We're going to have to stop, we're going to have to plug the water up again.
From the other end?
Yeah.
And saw the gate.
Saw the gate.
What's the gate made out of, Peter?
I'm sorry?
What's it made out of?
It's going to be mounted of steel. It'll be a steel gate, yeah. Where, it's going, we couldn't do anything, although the measurements are the very same, this cistern versus the old one, everything was done to try to replicate, everything, the new with the old. We could not take a chance on ordering the gate, it's custom-built without the measurements exact to what we have here. So that's the reason for the delay. And that's, and this is our finished product. Looking at it, looking at it from, from the roof of the, from the roof of the pump house. This picture was taken, so we're looking down at it, and that's our finished product. This is the wall we were talking about, that we had to build to that wall. This made it a repair versus a replacement. The critical words that you fellas understood for us. And fortunately for us, we feel very good. We got the right company. Actually, it's a company from Fall River. And they just knew, they've been in the game, they played the game on larger scales than this. They moved very quickly far us, they did a great job. They were very conscious of anything that was being done, or make sure nothing, no debris fell into the water. They covered up that whole area, so, you know, it was really, got a lot of fun, if that's the right word, watching them.
I went by a couple of times.
Yeah, so.
They did a nice job.
They did a good job, we feel very good about it. So, with that, that's, that's the next, that's our explanation.
So you're done, all you got to do is drop the gate in.
That's correct. And today, there's a, there's a small, there's a retaining wall just being finished today between the cistern itself and the prior wall that was in place. That got damaged a little bit with the machines going back and forth. And that's all been, that's been fixed to the extent that it is now. It's not quite finished yet, but again, when the gate, when the gate comes, we'll go back in, we'll finish everything that we can, clean it up, clean it up, and it'll look pretty much the way it did before the, all of this started. Most importantly, we'll have our building in full protection. We're, we're able to run now, we're, we've got it in line, we've tested the, we've tested our pump. We feel good about it. We feel very good about it. And I think we're, I think we're in good shape. We found some things out about the town, the, the main on the street would probably not be sufficient to give us fire protection if we had to have it. That was, that was a big concern. You know, we worked with the fire department, we worked with the building department, they understood our situation. We worked as quickly and as, as, I would say, expeditiously as we possibly could, getting onto the schedule with the, with the construction company. So, and you folks cooperated, you helped us out a little bit, just giving us that, that understanding that we needed that repair versus replacement situation. We had one engineer that came in, looked at it, looked at that, that wall, and he said, I don't, I think you're going to have to take that whole thing out, you're going to have to go all the way back, probably forty or fifty feet, and rebuild the whole thing. And that would have been replacements. I said, we can't do that. I had to go to experience of a few other people before we took it, I just wasn't going to do that. It couldn't happen. So, that's what we have. To layman's terms, no engineering words, no, I don't have the words for the, Jackie would have used to explain in the.
Not necessary, Peter.
Looked terrific.
Looked really good.
Oh, thank you. It'll look even nicer when we finish it. When the weather turns again, we'll go down and we'll put a finished coat on it, it'll look, it'll look, it'll look great. There will be a grate over the top of it, which there hadn't been before, but we will put that over. So that, any, anybody inquiring about it is, there's going to be a grill there, so nobody will fall into it.
I don't know whether, I don't know whether the weather's going to be good for you until you get your gate?
No, well, we won't do that, we won't do the grill until the gate comes. We've got it partitioned off now, so it's.
Yeah, but I mean, hopefully you'll have some low water, and if, whatever you need to do in there, you can get in there and do it.
Yeah. Well, the flow is good right now, so we don't have any problem with maintaining the pressure that we need.
You have flow right now?
Yes, we do.
I didn't know that.
We have, we have a full flow right now.
Oh, good.
So we're, we're in, we're in good shape.
Our missing member was concerned that it was going to affect the potential herring population of Three Mile River.
The herring, the ladder is supposed to be as far, on the far side of the, away, on the other side of the.
On the Taunton side of the river.
Yeah, on the Taunton side, exactly. I mean, poor fish, I don't, I don't know who's going to give them the guidance to get, get up that ladder, but that's, that's somebody else's problem. We're not going to, we're not going to get into that one.
Well, Jim didn't want to have them stock herring, run up the ladder, and then get washed down the river again.
I guess. I know that Brad Cheese has been working on that now for over fifteen years.
Now, we then just go into the lower part of the river, goes, she goes through the mill, and comes out back into the river again.
Say, I'm sorry, say that again.
The water that, the souss wave.
Yeah.
Your fire system.
Yeah.
The water runs under the mill?
Doesn't run under the, it runs, there's a parking lot, if you will.
Yeah.
It comes, this, this, the cistern is at the end of the, at the end of the route, if you will. Water, the water is channeled underneath the road and car, and runs about two hundred and fifty, oh, at least two hundred and fifty feet, underground until it's reached, you know, and it's all, it's always a downward pitch. So it's, how would you say? The pressure, the pressure is attained when the water gets to the cistern, the water raises all the way to the level of the dam. Just sheer gravity, it's a sheer gravity flow, right? It comes all the way down beside the, it ends up beside the, the pump house. And that's, that's how we get the pressure, we force that water. When the pump gets turned on, the downward pressure is exerted, draws the water, and that's how we get our, that's how we get our protection, that's how we get our sprinkler system to work. But that, it runs about, it's, I'm going to guess it's two hundred, it could be considerably more than that. Coming off the river around, we, we've got a penstock there where the water's stored for, as it sits in there, and then it's, from that, it's drawn again. I don't know if that answers it or not.
Been there for, how old is the mill?
That's right.
How old is the mill?
We have dates, the first buildings, this, that are still standing, in the early nineteen hundreds. The last building was built in nineteen twenty-two. Strangely enough, that building went down to the demolition. But everything was built in between, all, you've been in there, you've probably seen it, yeah, all, all connected, with one exception, one, one building that's not connected.
Well, if the herring are smart enough to get up into Three Mile River, they should be smart enough to stay away from the cistern. If not.
They're waiting long enough to get up there, I think that they'll say, hey, we like it up, if that's what they want to be. I don't know where they go from there, I don't know if they keep going further up.
Well, they plan to put, they plan to put another fish ladder up at the, the other dam off of the boulevard, or something. The law, behind the old great yard plant, the dam up there.
Well, that's them, your Raytheon plant.
The, the one at Lincoln Street? That's, that'd be the lower.
No, there's one, there already is one off Lincoln Haven.
Right.
There's one up against Lincoln, yeah.
That's right.
And they got a dam up there where you are, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, the next dam is, well, they took, they took, the next dam was up down Bay Street.
Yeah, they did.
Well, actually, Redenbiden, no, Redenbiden's got one. Redenbiden's got a dam, and then it'd be Bay Street.
Is that the same river, is that the same flow?
Same river.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, same river. Because there's nothing in Westville, right?
Is that, is that Taunton, that's not Dyton?
That's, uh.
Redenbiden?
Yeah, that's Taunton.
Oh, yeah.
Well, just across from you is Taunton, that's Taunton all the way through.
What's that, what comes next, Norton?
Yeah. That, your water originates off of four ninety-five.
Yeah, what's the name of that river?
Up at, uh, Bay Street. Originates up there, and then comes down through, and on one forty in Norton, where you drive through the reservoirs. That's your water. That used to go to Mill, up until, what, ten, twelve years ago? I believe, that's the Waden River Corporation that owned that, which was Dyton Industries. And the town of Norton bought those reservoirs. But there's also three pump houses up there to regulate that waterfall.
Really?
Yeah, I used to work on it. Twice a year, I'd have to go check them for Dyton Industries.
So are those gates still working?
I don't know. Yeah, they must be, because they can regulate the water. The town of Norton has control over them now, so they picked them up. You know, like I say, that was the Waden River Corporation.
That's what they had.
Waden River. Yeah.
What surprised us was the, the debris, if you will. This, all the silt that built up here, one of our guys actually walked on that.
That's all.
So the water, it's still, you know, two feet deep. The twelve-foot dam. Pretty amazing.
Yeah.
I'm sure it didn't look like that when they built the dam.
Oh, I'm sure they didn't. But how much junk is in there, you know? If that's the right word.
Yeah, well, all the runoff and, I don't know, everything over the years.
That, the side walls on our dam, nineteen twenty-nine, dated nineteen twenty-nine. I assume that that's when the dam was built. And with this, with the, when we had this opening like this, Billions, the fellow who did our annual, our five-year inspection, was able to look at that. And he said, actually, the dam was in very, very good shape. There were a couple of spots there that we could have worked on, but he, it wasn't, it wasn't critical at all.
Well, from a look at it, there's not much of an impoundment there.
Right.
It's a little shallow river.
That's right. It's amazing, it was amazing to us.
The only pressure on it is the dirt that's built up behind it.
And again, I think it comes off the hills, it comes off the, off the farms and everything else there. All along the way. The rain runs it down, the snow carries it down. So it's, it's pretty interesting. Well, those pictures are yours. Welcome to them, they may be something for posterity. We have others if, if you need them. If you don't need them, I'll take them.
I make a motion that we, we have a hearing. And issue an order of conditions for the project.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
You're all done, Peter?
Very good. You'll, do you need anything from Jackie? Any paperwork, anything?
I don't think so.
Counting Gazette receipt.
That's right.
Oh, yeah.
She, she paid for the receipt, but it didn't come tonight.
Receipts to a butters. You know, you have to notify, by registered mail.
Gazette advertisement.
They'd be green and about the size of that photograph.
I didn't have the receipt, I know that.
Okay.
Yeah, I know I didn't have that. I think I have a picture of it, but I don't have, is a picture of it good enough?
No, she just, she sent an email that she had paid the Gazette for the.
I saw her check, I saw a picture of the check, that's what I'm thinking of.
Yeah. No, we need the receipt.
You want the receipt itself?
She can send us an email of our copy of the receipt.
I'll make sure she goes on.
If not, we'll want to buy mail.
Okay, this request, Charlie, for certificates of compliance.
Very good, gentlemen, thank you.
Yeah.
Good night.
Be safe. I don't have to sign it on this one.
Well, we get the public discussion part.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
I'd say.
Would you mind signing?
No. This is for the old purchase house thing?
Yeah. That's public discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have public.
I don't want to talk about it. I'm not here for that anyway.
Nothing to talk about tonight?
I, about anything, you mean?
Whatever's on your mind.
Oh, okay. I got a problem with the nature walk that you put down on County Street. I was at one of the hearings one time when you were proposing it, and I told you the problem I had with the hunters. Well, I got a window broken now. And I think it's a safety.
It's what? Tony, I can't hear you.
I think it's a safety problem we have right now, because we've got people walking near Nature Trail.
What, what, what? Where?
Down on one thirty-eight, no.
Oh, the new one?
The new.
All right.
But I was here when you were proposing to do some work there.
Yeah.
I told you about the hunters were shooting, and my wife was telling me that the pellets were hitting the house. Well, somebody broke a window now.
In your house?
In my house. So, at the time that you proposed it, I asked you if you would put up signs of no hunting or something to that effect.
You did, I remember that.
And they never got put up.
You're not going to put up signs that you can't hunt there.
Okay. I'll have to take it somewhere else.
Why would we do that? The people of Dyton own that land, you, you, if you exclude hunters, then you got to exclude walkers or ice skaters or?
Well, you're going to, you're going to have a problem there anyways, between the walkers and the hunters, because right now it's deer season, and you've got people walking around there and just about back. There was a guy with two kids walking out of the woods tonight, and I just about could see him. I mean, you know what happened in Norton? Where that woman got shot?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. State cop shot it.
Yeah. I mean, let's be reasonable about this, I'm not, I'm not looking to stop anybody from doing anything, I'm just looking.
You wanted signs around your house, around?
Actually, actually, it ought to be posted as a safety zone. For the hunt, no, yeah, the hunting part of it should be posted as a safety zone. And that'll, that'll theoretically keep them away from the house. I mean, that.
That was what you wanted before.
Well, yeah.
It's supposed to, because you had bird hunters, you were worried about.
Or duck hunters, geese hunters, whatever.
Yeah.
Whatever they're shooting at out there, you know, I think it's ducks and geese.
Yeah.
Probably, because they're shooting up in the air and it hit the house.
Yeah, well, safety zone, safety zone, I think is like two hundred and fifty or three hundred and fifty feet.
But I think at least during deer season, you either, should limit it to either hunters or the bird watchers or nature walkers, because there's going to be, somebody's going to get shot down there, I'm telling you. When it happens, I'm going to come back and tell you, I told you so.
Yeah, well, Jim had that trouble down there, he ran into a couple of people walking when he was down there hunting. And they didn't have one, and he calls.
Tonight, the guy had two little kids. And they're all dressed in dark clothes.
Yeah.
I mean, you're going to have an accident there. I mean, at least during deer season, you should post it. It open to hunters or, you know, not open to people that want to use a niche trail.
They have something saying that they couldn't enter there without, uh.
Well, they should at least have, at least have colors on.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Jack Taylor. You know, over in Rhode Island, they have signs up during hunting season, it just says, you need to wear orange. Jack Taylor, you know, uh, over in Rhode Island, they have signs up during hunting season, it just says, "You need to wear orange." So, it might be something to put down there, just on that, on that sign, just to say, "During hunting season, wear orange," because...
Also, like I say, it's, it's, uh, I don't know, I, I don't know if I've ever seen them around. Of course, they get the five hundred foot deal anyway, but...
They use, they use...
There used to be lots of signs that said safety. Well, I mean, I know up, I know up in, in the North Country, around all the farms and the buildings, they put up safety zones.
Right.
So, you stay so far away.
But it's posted at the five hundred feet.
I'm not sure of the footage, Tony, but yeah, that's where, that's where it's, I know, I know Massachusetts is five hundred foot, and that's the way it should be posted if, if, uh...
I just don't wanna see somebody get shot.
No, 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 I realize, I realize.
And I don't want two more windows broken in my house.
No, no, I realize that, but I mean, like, for your house...
I can take you right here right now and show you the window that got broken.
For your house, you know what I mean, the safety zone signs, and then post it, you know what I mean, that you gotta wear colors, uh, during, during hunting season, that's all.
Well, that's gonna be posted at the parking lot where the people walk.
Right, yeah, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And see if they're adhered to it, but if they don't adhere to it, you know...
Well, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, you know, that's their problem.
I tell you, it's, it's, it's dangerous.
Yeah.
Somebody's gonna get hit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Especially during deer season, you know?
Yeah. Bird hunting, it's not quite as bad.
No.
Still, it's not that good, so...
Is that something the board will look into, or...
Yeah. Bird shot, broke your window?
Yes, sir. I'll take it down and show you.
If you can tell me.
Yeah.
Bird shot.
Bird shot.
Had to be close.
Huh?
Had to be close to your house.
I'll tell you, they're walking on my side, well, my side. They're walking on my house side of the brook to access it. I own a piece of land that goes right out into the water.
Yep.
The people are crossing it to go over to where you used to own. You know what I mean? And, uh...
Once we get that big pipe in, then we're able to cross right there, and they, they won't have to run along the creek there behind your house.
Well, maybe you could put some signs there, you know, something, safety zone or something.
I haven't seen them safety zone signs in a long time. No, I haven't seen any around here. Up north, you see them all over. Of course, they don't have, uh, I mean, like, even deer hunting, you know what I mean, state of Vermont, uh, as far as discharging a weapon, can't discharge it from the travel portion of the roadway. Or if you step off three feet, you can shoot, but, uh...
Different states have different regulations.
No, 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 I realize that, Tony, but I mean, they should, you know, shouldn't they just put up safety zone signs if they're shooting up towards the house? You know, that would... To break a window with bird shot, you gotta be...
Gotta be fairly close.
Sixty, seventy yards from your house.
Well, you say that, yeah, but if you start shooting up in the air...
Yeah, it'll travel...
It'll travel further.
They do travel further, but they lose their velocity, you know, on the down.
It broke the window, that's all I can tell you. I think it's bird shot, less than buck shot, I don't know.
Had to be close to your house.
It had, maybe it was buck shot, I don't know.
Oh, well, that's what I asked you.
You know, I don't know, I mean, I can't find the pellet, but I know the window's broke. It's gonna, you know, I know...
Got a what? Got a hole in it like this? Had to been a piece of buck shot, double O buck, number four buck?
Maybe, it's still, it's too, too, they're too, they're too close. You know? I never had that problem for thirty years. So, you put the nature walk in, people have access to the marsh, you know? So, I'm just here to ask for some help. I asked for it when you, when you were trying to permit it, to build it. And I guess you didn't, uh, follow through with that.
I what?
You didn't follow through with putting the signs up. You, you said you were gonna put signs up to begin with.
What the hell would be... I can't remember exactly what we decided on, on the signs for that piece.
He was talking about signs that went around in, in the marshy area, so they wouldn't be shooting near his house. I remember that. But now, this is another issue. I mean, people coming from the city are gonna walk in there, they don't, they never hunted in their life. And, uh, either force them to wear something, uh, what are you gonna do? You gotta, how you gonna police it?
You can't, you can't really force them, Charlie, but, you know, you can put a notification.
You can at least warn them and...
Yeah, put a notification.
That they shouldn't walk in there in deer season or though...
Yeah, hunt the safety orange, be quiet, you know what I'm saying?
Anything, I mean, even if it's just safety yellow, I mean, we just, we should see them.
Yeah.
I mean, the guy come out there tonight with two little kids, and he was, he was in dark clothes with the kids with, I'm saying, oh, man.
Just around the parking lot, or actually came out of the woods?
Out of the woods, walking to the parking lot when I was going by.
Yeah, I'd be designed there now, so it draws people. Why don't we just an open lot?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Well... Tommy make signs?
No.
Yeah, I, I...
He does?
I don't know, Tommy makes signs, but Tommy put a sign up.
Yeah, Tommy does. We oughta do something, uh, warning them that, uh, it's hunting season, and they shouldn't be going in without, uh...
Yeah, blaze orange. Not just orange, blaze orange.
That way, if they wanna take a chance to walk in, they've been warned, they should be wearing high-vis clothing, and, uh...
The, the sign should be, you should put one in the parking lot, and one where, where the entrance goes through the wall. Because they have to go through that wall section to go to the nature trail.
That would be the best place to put it.
That would be the place to put it. And maybe we could put some safety zone signs, you know, around, wrap it around towards my house.
Yeah, 'cause actually, if I remember correctly, you would even put them up, but we got them.
Yeah, I'll put them up.
How many you made the offer?
I'll put, I'll put them up. You want me to look into them?
I'll try to find, I'll try to...
You want me to look up, we can do them, put them up?
If we get them, you can put them up, yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe, uh, maybe somebody oughta watch him.
Why is that?
Putting them up.
Put them up, send this to Bill.
Well, we wanna make sure you don't put them too far away from, uh, into our property. Well, this is, gotta be five hundred feet from his dwelling, Bill. Yeah, that's where they oughta go. Well, yeah, I mean, that's the thing, yeah.
Well, then you guys put them up then. I'm just offering to help, see if I can help you, you know? You don't want my help?
No, I mean, it's, it's, uh, you know, to put them up, they should be five hundred foot from your building.
That stream is just about five hundred foot, that brook that runs up in there.
Yeah, in the marsh, behind your place?
Yeah, it's just about five hundred.
About five hundred feet?
Yeah.
But I mean, that's the law, but a lot of people don't know it, you know, five hundred feet from the roadway, five hundred feet.
Anywhere they shoot should know it.
Pardon?
Well, yeah, I mean, they do and they don't, but if they didn't look up the road, they don't know, you know what I'm saying?
Well, the public...
Like, like a few guys that were out bird hunting one day after Thanksgiving, huh? Shortly after somebody moved into town.
Who was that?
Quite a few years ago, there were three guys out bird hunting, right behind somebody's house, when Richie Walton, myself, right there, and my mother's, and we could look down and see your house. Said your wife got a little upset with the gunshots, but...
I don't remember that, but...
Yeah, yeah. But he does.
Well, that's what happens when you live in the woods.
Well, no, that's the thing, it's... We'll do something down there, Tony. Yeah, yeah, no, well, look.
Let's look at it, you know what I mean, the safety zone.
I don't wanna see anybody get hit, killed, or whatever, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, no, it's true, Tony.
True.
About, uh, true. Let's see if we can do something to deteriorate them from going, you know, on my side of the brook or something, you know?
Yeah. No, if we get some safety zone signs, so, and... And a blaze orange thing. Yeah, yeah, also, yeah. Couple right there, like you say, where you cross the wall, and one on one...
A lot of people, a lot of people are using it. You know, a lot of people are using it for, you know, walking. You know, you see them walking their dogs mostly.
Yeah, there's a car there all the time when you go by.
Yeah, always. Sometimes too, you know? Is it connected to the railroad tracks yet?
Jesus, I don't know. I don't think so.
No.
Tommy had, Tommy was waiting for DEP to tell him what he needed to do around that west end of the old landfill, or the old dump. He had, he needed to get orders from them about what he needed to do, then he was gonna put, then he was gonna connect the pass. And he's supposed to tell me when he, when he got all that together, but I haven't heard from him.
Well, I make a motion that we, uh, copy up, uh, some money for, uh, safety signs to delineate, uh, Mr. Roderick's property, and, uh, warning signs that, uh, it's hunting season, and you shouldn't walk the trail without high visibility clothing.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
You got that written in there?
I did, I wrote it right down.
Then we got it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Are you gonna talk to, uh, Tommy?
I'll see Tommy in the morning. If not, I'll get a hold of Paul.
That's right, you guys eat...
Well, lots of times they see him, you know, if they see him, I'll talk to him, and, uh, you know. Check, see what he's got, if not, uh... I was gonna call him when I first saw that new sign up, but I had problems. Been in the hospital a couple of...
I noticed it when I went by.
Huh?
Did we pay for that, or did, who paid for that?
I don't know. Well, I, Tommy didn't tell me he was putting it up, up and went.
Jesus, as property owners, for Christ's sake, or land management, uh, commission, we oughta be advised before they start doing things.
Uh, that's what I planned to tell him.
Pretty good.
Even the signs.
Did the, uh, recreation department take over the, uh...
No.
Somebody had to pay for the sign, unless Tommy feel, uh, got extra money in his budget.
I don't know.
Yeah, I noticed it, uh, Thanksgiving when I went shooting by, um, to see my, uh, father.
It's on both sides of the sign, too, coming back. You could, same thing, same thing. All right, what have we got left, Charlie?
All we got is a certificate of compliance for, uh, the Mill property, for the former... last property on, uh, Somerset Avenue. They completed the, uh, removal of the lead deposits, and...
Removal of the what?
The lead.
Oh, okay.
Lead crystal.
Yeah.
That's all completed, and they're looking for, uh, certificates of, uh, compliance for two different orders of conditions we issued. SEO one seven three three five and O three seven seven.
I wish they'd have been here. I wish they would've been here, so we could ask them a couple of little questions, but, uh...
Well, they're in Maine, Portland, Maine, it's a long trip.
Well... Are we sure that they're done and complete, and everything is in order? Last time I was there was, uh, milk.
I started reading through it, then I get tired.
Yeah. Old people do that, they start hudding off.
Well, they sent that to DEP, they, they, DEP had issued the, uh, permit to remove the stuff.
I know that.
And we, uh, on the local level, were involved, but they were, it was a DEP project.
And they're done?
They're done.
The DEP says okay?
I don't know. If you don't want us on certificate of compliance, we'll find out if they're done, and if DEP said okay. They got, uh, blocky disk there, you can throw it in the computer. And we can postpone this till, uh, January the, the eleventh.
At least they left a phone number, taking a lot of asking. Let's get to the back and see what they say. Investigating and monitoring data. All right, they like it. DEP says it's good.
They didn't say anything to us.
No, they say it in here.
But that, they filed this with, uh, DEP and us.
Right. So, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to, uh...
I'll make a motion that we assign the two certificates of, uh, compliance for AGCOM and IES Enterprises on...
Somerset Avenue.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Take care of that part. What was the hell that was?
There you go.
You guys got any other business you're gonna go over? Anything else? You gonna, if you got anything else, you guys are gonna go over tonight?
Tonight?
Any other business?
We're done.
I got a question. Did DeRosa come in and file an RDA for that property? Do you know why?
Nope.
No, I don't know why.
I spoke to you six weeks ago, and you told me he was.
Six weeks ago, we told him he had to come in and file.
So, what do you do now? What do you do now?
I think I'll take a right by there tomorrow.
What's that?
I think I'll take a right by his place tomorrow.
There's two, two parcels, uh, there's two parcels there. There's one that Roderick's owns, where the place of business is, and then there's the open field that he, he purchased from the diocese. So, you're dealing with two parcels of land, not just one.
The open parcel, is the one in the back?
No.
Which parcel are we talking about?
The one he cleared.
That's a different parcel from...
Yes, it is.
Does he own them now, or is it still...
Well, he owns the one.
Which one?
The one he cleared.
The open field.
So, with the old sawmill, he doesn't own that, just rents it?
Going upstairs, he don't. Going to the assessor's office, he don't. So, you got, you know, two RDA's that gotta be filed.
The property didn't belong to the church?
Pardon?
The property that, that's adjacent to the sawmill didn't belong to the diocese of Paul River?
It did. He purchased that.
That runs up into the back as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, it goes from County Street all the way out to whatever the extent is up?
Mendoza's fields, the back fields of Mendoza. But you, you told me it was flagged, and I've researched it a little bit, and I don't, I don't believe it's been flagged. The last time that place was flagged was when the diocese was trying to sell it to someone for a solar farm. And I can show you exactly where it flagged.
The last time that was flagged is when, uh, Roderick's, Rodriguez, uh, uh, started filming in the, uh, the marsh. The, the guy who flagged it...
That's that parcel of land, a little bit.
He flagged along the marsh.
Yeah.
And he went up around the bushes as well and into the other property. But mostly, he went right up along the edge where the big bushes were, and stopped halfway in.
Why would he go on somebody else's property? Why would he go on somebody else's property?
DeRosa claims that he hired, uh,
Brandon.
Oh, Brandon.
Brandon Fannup, I don't know the name of his company.
Brandon Fannup?
Brandon Fannup. He has a, that's not the name of his company, it's a, it's a, it's a consultant firm. And he flagged the wetland area.
There must be a, you flagged the wetland area, all the flags gotta be numbered.
They should be.
And it should be a plan of where his flags were. Have you seen that?
No. Haven't been on the property.
Yeah, but Brandon flagged that, that'd be for, uh, Rodriguez, for Rodriguez-
No, he flagged the area that just got cleared.
Oh, did he?
That's what, uh-
For who?
DeRosa claims.
He, he flagged it for DeRosa?
Yeah.
I don't know, I think somebody's lying here, I don't, I don't think it's you, Charlie.
I saw flags, but I went in there, I didn't look at numbers and I didn't look to see if Brandon initialed them or anything like that.
No, you do, all, when you flag wetlands, they gotta be numbered. And there's gotta be a plan.
I said, I seen the flags and I didn't go in and look at them, you know?
He, he hasn't-
I didn't take them in my hand and look at them.
He's been talked to several times and, uh-
I just went through this and rehobed. When you flag wetlands, the flag has to have a number on it.
Yeah, of course it does.
That number has gotta reflect on a plan.
Yes. We know that.
But there's no plan. We haven't seen it.
I could tell you, I could tell you, my lands have been flagged, they ain't got no plan, how's it been flagged? That's just hearsay. When, I'm telling you, when the diocese was trying to sell that property-
You think I oughta go in there and make them clean it up?
To a firm to put a solar farm in there. They had the firm come in and flagged that.
No, nothing.
It wasn't DeRosa.
Supposed to come in and file an IDA.
And I can show you exactly, and I can show you some of the flags that that company put in there.
We never had anybody file with us.
No, they didn't have to file with you, but I mean, they were just doing this to see if it was feasible.
Alright.
Just to see if it was feasible. You know what I'm saying?
Now, all I know is that the board of health, uh, sent the building inspector or somebody from the building department down.
Yeah.
And he has to file, uh,
Stormwater.
Land clearance, for a land clearance permit.
And stormwater.
Yeah.
And stormwater.
Yeah.
Plan.
That's the-
But you told me he was gonna file an IDA.
He told me that too. I'm still waiting for it, it hasn't here.
So how do you address that?
He's a man of many promises.
So how did the board address that?